Good morning. Called order, the January 15, 2019, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, on items that are not on today's agenda, and usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the agenda for today's public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for January 8, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of January 8, 2019, as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we accept the county commission minutes of January 8, 2019, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Reorganization of the Sling County Commission Board for 2019.
All right. This time, we have election of our officers for the year for 2019. Are there nominations for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Bob Vedrickson for chairman.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that Bob Vedrickson be nominated for chairman. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, then I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of Vedrickson being chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. He is now the chairman again. Election of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Roger Sparks for vice chairman.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Roger Sparks being the vice chairman for 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Election of secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jim Wees for secretary.
And I'll second that. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Jim Wees being the secretary for 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So it looks like we have the same election of officers that we had a year ago. So continuity in this case, I think, is a good thing. I do want to make some comments right real quickly. I feel compelled to respond to this selection of officers of the slate that has taken place. First, let me thank my fellow commissioners for entrusting me with the role associated with being the chairman. It's indeed an honor and very humbling to me personally to be elected to this important position of leadership within the county commission form of government. I'm ready and willing to continue the role of chairman. Two years into this term of current commissioners has been very enlightening. Many votes and discussions have taken place, and many times, the vote has been split and the opinions have been split on topics. Yet, at the end of the day, we simply move on to the next order of business with no ill feelings or animosities towards one another. And that is a very positive thing in a commission. The county commission has several extremely important issues ahead. In no particular order, there are completion of the road annexation agreement with the city of Salina, agreed to new lease terms regarding the Sling County Expo Center. A proposal will be forthcoming soon regarding jail population reduction and possible revamping or remodeling of facilities. We have emergency radio considerations and agreements with the city of Salina to be considered. And last but certainly not least, we will be transitioning into a new county administrator in March. So we have a lot of things on our plate, particularly early in the year. So I think my fellow commissioners will agree with me that we're all willing and able and ready to roll up our sleeves and tackle these situations. So that is my speech of the day. So we will now move on to, I guess we have the appointments for our various committees. And with everyone's commission, unless someone opposes or doesn't wish to be reassigned to the same committees they were on last year, I'm going to remain, suggest that we keep those the same. Is that okay with everyone?
I second the motion.
I think, again, the continuity is important there, and everyone is well informed of those that are appointed to the Airport Authority, Chamber of Commerce, Central Kansas Mental Health, Sling County Building Authority, Senior Services, Tri Rivers Fair, Jail Population, Health Department Advisory Council. It's important to continue those roles of continuity. So thank you for accepting those. And we're now into item number four. Item number three. Skip door or something. Okay. I guess we need to set, we have to put it into a motion of setting a time, date, and time for a weekly regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Tuesdays as our regular weekly meeting date in room 107, with general operating hours from 8:45 a.m. to 5 o'clock p.m., or continuing until all scheduled business is concluded in the formal meeting time as 9 a.m. on Tuesdays. The exception to this would be on holidays and as otherwise posted.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we adopt Tuesdays as our regular meeting room, as continued in the same fashion. Is there any discussion? All right. I will call for the question then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Tuesdays will remain as our meeting date. Well, now, the appointments have already been made, so we will now move on to, I guess, do we need action on that then, I assume? On the board appointments for 2019? It apparently we do.
Let's just go ahead and make a formal. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board appointments similar to this year for 2019 as set forth by the Sling County Board of Commissioners.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the board appointments for 2019 as set forth by the Sling County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will now move on to item number four.
Human Resources update with Marilyn Lemar, human resources director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. Workers' compensation, we had four new injuries, but no lost time on that. We haven't had any unemployment appeals, no updates to benefits and insurance. For policies and procedures, just to recap, there were six policies that were brought before you a couple weeks ago. Those were approved and have already been distributed to employees. Under miscellaneous items, we are moving forward with our applicant tracking provider. It's the online application. That transition has started. We have had the kickoff meeting that was just sharing of information, design and configuration meeting where we reviewed their online application. There was an implementation workbook that we had to provide to them, and it was basically job description, salary ranges, reporting status, fair labor standard status. We do have some upcoming meetings to continue on that process. United Way campaign was completed at the end of the year. We collected $4,402 for the United Way. Senior Center Meals on Wheels employee campaign was completed for $648 for that. For new hires, we have five new hires, eight transfers or promotions. We have eight that are no longer employed, and as the time that this was written, there were 20 vacant positions, which is a little high. We did make a job offer, and we have a corrections officer starting tomorrow, so we can move that down to 19. One of the items on here is a position that's been vacant for quite a while, is the Planning and Zoning Director. That job offer was extended, or it was extended and accepted. We will be having a planning and zoning director onboard. It's Catherine Geist. She will start part-time as she's finishing up her master's degree, and once that's complete, then she will be here on a full-time basis. So she's actually starting part-time basis on the 28th of this month. She will graduate in May, and at that point, she will be at a full-time basis.
That's an exciting variation from what we have done in the past, and I'm excited to have a young knowledgeable person in that regard on our staff.
Yes, me too.
So that's a nice move.
Me too. Upcoming events, of course, try to fill as many of these vacancies as we can. We've got W-2s that we'll be getting out to employees, Affordable Care Act reports that we have to have to employees having a blood drive on the 14th of February, if anybody is interested. The next steps for our applicant tracking system is we're going to have some system administrator testing on January 22nd and 23rd, so that's for our office. We'll have hiring manager training prep. Again, that's for our office. We'll be doing that on February 6th. And then we'll have hiring manager training that's going to occur on February 11th. There's two sessions. This is where the hiring managers will come in and learn about the system. We're going to have a pre-launch check on the 27th of February, and hope to launch the system on March 1st.
Very good. Questions or comments from the commissioners for Ms. Lemar? Hearing none, thank you very much, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item number five.
RFA 103-19 Motor Grader Bid Award with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. This is for the award of contract for the purchase of three new motor graders. Sealed bids were opened on December 3 of 2018 at the City-County Building, and two bids were received and are as follows. One from Foley Equipment in the total amount of $794,151, with a repurchase of $450,000. That makes the total cost bid $344,151. Murphy Tractor submitted a bid of $786,480, with a trade guarantee of $463,500, and the total cost bid of $322,980. The bid documents were checked and found to be in compliance with the specification. It is significant and noted and discussed that the John Deere machines from Murphy Tractor are a guaranteed trade agreement, and the motor graders from Foley Tractor are a guaranteed repurchase agreement. Guaranteed trade means that if in five years or 7,500 hours, that particular dealer is awarded the bid, this is the trade value that they will allow for each machine. On a guaranteed repurchase, at the end of five years or 7,500 hours, this is the amount that that particular dealer will repurchase the machine for. In both these examples, Sling County owns the machine and retains the right to dispose of them as they see appropriate. Sling County has been using the total cost bidding method for purchasing motor graders since 1990. Total cost bidding lets the county consider all major costs before actually buying a machine. In addition, this method allows the county to acquire guarantees on maximum equipment costs through competitive bidding. In writing, we have the purchase price, the maximum we will pay for repairs, and scheduled maintenance. The three motor graders scheduled for repurchase are 2014 John Deere 77 GPs. All three machines will be sold back to Murphy Tractor for $486,405. That's $162,135 per machine. Alternatives for action is to approve the total cost bid in the amount of $786,480, and award to Murphy Tractor Topeka, Kansas, for three new 2019 John Deere 670 GPs, electronic over hydraulic machines, which with a guaranteed trade of $463,500 in 2024. Since Murphy Tractor has the repurchase contract from 2014 for $486,405, the total out-of-pocket expense will be $300,075. Approve the total cost bid in the amount of $794,151, and award to Foley Tractor Salina, Kansas, for three new 2019 12 M3s, electric over hydraulic machines, with the guaranteed repurchase of $450,000 in 2024. Staff recommends accepting the low total cost bid and award to Murphy Tractor. Approval and award to Murphy Tractor for the 2019, the Roden Bridge line item currently has $591,000 in it. The proposed purchase of the three John Deere 670 GPs would be $300,075. That is, the purchase amount minus the 2014 motor graders that they will be buying back. That will leave that line item with a balance of $290,925. If you approve the award to Foley Equipment for the 2019 M3s, our special Roden Bridge machinery fund has $1,767,603.94. The purchase price of $794,151 would come out of that account, leaving a remaining balance of $973,452.94. The dollars from the repurchase machine for the John Deere motor graders would go back into that account.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I'm going to voice my displeasure with how we write the bids and how we take them on the repurchase versus trade agreements and so forth. But I do understand that Murphy is the low bidder, and I'm not going to get in the way of that. But I do want to redirect staff at some point in time that we reconsider on how we send out this bid process. And I may not have any support from my other commissioners, I'm not sure about that. But I still believe that there's a better way to go about this, you know, requesting action and getting the bids. I think there's a better way of the trade potential that's involved there, so.
Mr. Chairman, are you specifically talking about how we do graders or all of our bidding process?
The graders. The graders is what I'm talking about, and the repurchase, and, you know, versus a trade agreement. And then those, I just, there's a better way in there, in my opinion. But now's not the time to get into that process or your statements. But I've spoke with Andrew about this a little bit, and I think we can maybe come up with some alternatives. If not, well, I'll be the one that takes the brunt of the blow on that one, so. Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Question, Darren. How come the buyback machines are going to be rolled over in 2020 and not 19?
Let me get to that point. We, actually, when we receive dollars in 2019, it goes into account, and then the dollars are rolled over in 2020. We don't have the ability to use those funds, but they don't go away. But it's just a place to, I don't know the accounting reason behind it, but that's just what I've been told.
I can answer that a little bit more. Since we would be trading, since we're purchasing motor graders from a different vendor, the reimbursement from the repurchase, you can't use that money instantly. It has to be put into our account, and then it becomes available in 2020. So it is an accounting thing, state.
I figured as much.
Yes.
And now, my favorite question, what color will these machines be?
Yellow.
Really?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Just a quick other question is that when we go after bids on this, and this kind of filters back into Mr. Vedrickson's statement, can we add on to that as maybe like a percentage of the hours? Because I'm looking at, I don't know what the hours that they come out, since they're maintaining all these graders themselves.
Right.
Is that if they just maintained it at 7,300 hours, and it's 7,500 is the max we can put on it, can we put on their bid not to exceed 10% of these hours? I mean, just ask them. I mean, because it's hard to think that we would put that stipulation in there that we turn it back to you with 7,500 hours. And if we had some busy years and some of those got to that 7,490 hours and we can't take it out, and we still got four months to go.
Part two, I want to say, three years ago, it was five years or 6,500 hours. We upped that to 7,500 hours. We will, just in history, we've, that's, we will stay under that 7,500 hours.
Okay.
But it is sure something we can put in there.
I mean, I just wanted.
We have, when I first came to work here, we did park a motor grader for about two or three months, because it was getting close to its hours.
And that's certainly something that I would like to address also in the future, because we certainly don't want that to happen, particularly in light of, I mean, our constituents. They don't want to see that road grader parked.
Right.
You know, and luckily, it's only happened once, but it could happen again, and those are, so. We'll address that at another time.
Thank you.
As this does request an RFA for the action, I am going to take public comment at this time.
Yeah, Norman, Manaswana. I'm glad you commissioners are examining these bid processes better to get the best possible bid that we can get. So that is what your responsibility is, to get the best financing for the taxpayers. And you talk about consistency. Well, that might be a good policy. And then the next question that arises, I thought there was a policy in place where you were then a certain percentage of local dealership versus out-of-area dealership. Now, you're awarding a bid to a dealer that's, what, 120 miles away? But I thought we were supposed to favor local dealerships.
And this particular bid did not fall within that guideline.
It's more than, what, 10?
It's a larger amount than what our policy states.
Well, we need to change the policy.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Murphy Tractor for three new 2019 John Deere motor graders in the amount of $786,480.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 103-19 Motor Grader Bid Award. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for, call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item number six.
County Engineer update with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin, and welcome to your first rodeo here with, as far as your update goes, so.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Yeah, so this is my first go-around. I'm going to keep this relatively short and simple. I like simple, so, and straightforward.
And we like work.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go down the list of projects that I'm currently working on. But I'm going to start off with the one thing, the tool I thought was missing in our office, was a map of all projects that the Roden Bridge is going to try to get done for the next year. And so I placed an 11-by-17 map in front of you, and this is, it's just a little bigger map than what was put in your packet. I thought this is, you would appreciate that, because it was pretty small on eight-and-a-half by 11. So, but it has also changed some. So, you know, as we're putting projects together, this project map, it is a, it's constantly changing. You know, we're reevaluating what we can and should get done. And so this is a tool that's very moldable in a sense of what we're going to try to do. So I'm just going to kind of go through our projects. If you look at the map on the right-hand side, I did break it down into work that's going to be done by contract, and then work that's going to be done by county forces, okay? And especially the work done by county forces, this is a goal, not necessarily something we're going to guarantee we're going to get done. But this is something that Darren and his crews are going to try to work towards. I'm going to focus on the work by contractor. And so I'm going to start off with just a few projects that are carryovers from 2018. And the first project is the Stemel Road. I don't know if you can see this, my cursor kind of goes, I don't know if you can see that right there. We've got a box project on Stemel Road that is under contract with Reese Construction, and it's currently under construction now. They should be getting the box, oh, all the concrete placed and the structure itself in the next week or two. However, there's However, there's a significant amount of dirt work involved with that project. And so this time of year, it's kind of hard to get dirt work done because you've got to have soil that's somewhat manageable and with the moisture that we're having and just the time of the year, it doesn't dry real well, and so that can be kind of a longer process. A couple of other projects that we have that are carryover is the project on Reese and a project on Honig here and here. Those are two projects that have not started yet, but it is on the 2018 contract. And so talking with Reese, it'll probably be later on in a year before they get started on those projects. I do have one other project that I'll be talking with you guys about in the work session on another box project on Armstrong. So, but we'll get that, we'll get to that later. And this, it hasn't been officially approved for me to add that project yet, and so it's not on the map yet. Okay, so moving on to 2019 projects. There's a couple span projects. One span project that I'd like to get done in 2019 for sure, and that's the project on Waterwell Road, and that's the one that was delayed from last year or where the contract was not approved. And I'd like to get that project completed. And then the other one is a.
That's on East Waterwell Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And then there's the project on Mentor, which is right down, right down here on the map. So, that, this project's been hanging around for a while, and I think the previous staff has submitted that for high-risk, sorry, for the off-system bridge program funding, and it hasn't been approved quite a few years. And so if, if we can get that one let, it probably won't be built this year, but we might get it under contract this year is for that project. And that's a little bit bigger reinforced concrete haunts slab. So those are, those are the two span structures. The box projects, I won't go into each one, but your, the box projects, reinforced concrete boxes are the ones that are noted with a black dot around the county. I think there's, there'll be five additional projects there. The by two minutes patching and really your asphalt overlays, if you look on the map, those are denoted with a black line, and those will be the Old Highway 40 right here, we have Ohio Street just north of town. We've had North Street and Country Club Road right through here. And then we've got a couple other places down here south of the bombing range and then over here on Gibson Valley Road where those are more patches, you know, really small areas, so I just wanted to point those out. The chip seal projects are noted with a blue line. These chip seal projects may or may not also include a crack seal before that, so just trying to keep them, the map somewhat clean. I didn't add two lines there for a crack seal and blue, and a blue chip seal line. But we've got, right now, we've got scheduled about 44 miles of chip seal road. So, and that's about what we've, we've done in the past. Yes.
Just a quick question here. On some of these chip sealing, is some of this already completed though?
No.
Or is this redoing what was already just done?
Correct. Some of these, yeah, there is one section of road here that we did a prime and double chip seal last year. And on those types of roads, you know, where it's a fresh, fresh chip seal and it really doesn't have asphalt underneath of it, you want to try to get that covered up at least one other time to make sure that that road is sealed off, sealed off tight.
Thank you. I just, I just noticed.
All right. Further questions or comments for Mr. Mater?
Yeah, one more thing. One thing that I have noticed here is that in our situation I thought was supposed to be done this year is the chip and sealing of finishing up on Simpson Road. Those, that two mile stretch there that we built last year that was supposed to be chipped and sealed this year.
That is, you know, a lot of this map is working with, with staff in my office, you know, that are a little bit more familiar, you know, until I get really caught up on the roads. That project has not been included in there. I was not aware that that's something that the board wanted me to be working on. And so, as I said earlier, this map is constantly changing as we're prioritizing. It is, are those two miles from?
Well, it's on the map. It's the blue that it says by two minutes chip sealing and it's by contractor.
Right, but from, I think the two miles you're talking about is, are these two miles right here?
Right here.
And that's from?
Connecting two miles.
Yes. Yes.
That was last year when we, our county did the construction rebuilding of the road with the thing where we, we saved back half of that money to go ahead and finish re-chip and seal after one year of traffic on it. That's how that was set and done.
Darren, can you comment on that?
You know, it was, it was discussed at the time. I went back and looked at the RFA and when Justin was putting this map together, I did tell him that was something he was going to need to get some more guidance from the commission on if they, if they did wish to do that still. It was not in the RFA to do it, but I have talked to him about including it.
Wasn't it, wasn't the opinion that if, if we didn't chip and seal, we would lose all the effort and work that was put into, to building up the road?
At that time, it was, it was discussed to do it, yes.
Surely something can, I don't know if, if you've stretched the budget, if you've peaked out that or, but, but I do concur that it was something that we were going to chip and seal to.
That makes three of us, that's the way I remember it too.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just, I'm sitting.
Oh, sure, no, I could absolutely add it to the map. This is.
Without reviewing the documents of what he said, she said type of stuff, that, I know that that was our intention was for that, that's the reason that we waited a year, was to have, have that set up to where it would be able to, be able to do that project.
Sure, sure.
That part I do recall.
Yeah, and with the overlay, the crack seal and the chip seal, yeah, we have exhausted, you know, that one budget line item, you know, for contractual work on that. But that one there would be probably considered an upgrade, and we do have that one mil road improvement project, and that's what, you know, we would be using on Waterwell Road just north of the landfill, the one mile.
Well, then, what I want to find out from road and bridge is that what happened to the half of the monies that we saved back for that project because we did not spend it all, that we put half of it back in to take care of that then? So if that item is gone, then where did it go?
The dollars are still there. They are just yet to be rolled over when the auditor comes in. The dollars are still there.
That's just why I just want to, okay, then.
Okay.
Well, I think we, we certainly need, from your departments, we need to review what was, what was documented in that regard, but I certainly pretty much remember just as Jim and Roger have said, that that was going to be a project that was going to be completed this year.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, take a look at it.
Sure.
And we'll go from there, but I would put that on the, the big burner right up front right away, so.
Sure, okay. Yeah, and I think this is where it's, it's good to give quarterly reports to make sure we're, you know, we're on the same page on this. So it's, you know, adding, adding this project to the map's the easy part.
Fellow commissioners were able to recall how that went down.
Yep.
So I'm looking at the map and I'm thinking it's the blue line ahead of it and it's, and it's not. It's the other, the two lines, two miles connecting that particular road, so.
Right. Uh-huh.
And I have another Darren question. I'll spear Justin this one. Thacker Road, mile and a half for upgrade, has been discussed many years, and it's not a priority in 19?
It is not. I'm putting together some, you know, we talked about primary rural routes here a couple weeks ago. I'm working on another presentation on removing some gravel roads, them going back to earth, and then I'm going to come back with the primary rural route map, and Thatcher Road will be part of that discussion.
Very good. Forthcoming.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Further comments or questions for, for the staff?
Are you done with your, your presentation?
For the most part. I mean, yeah, there was the, the project on, on Waterwell Road that I mentioned, you know, before.
That's the one I want to bring up, so go ahead.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, it's, it's still on the, still in 2019 project. Right now, we're, we're processing the survey on that one because with that project, we're going to have to do a little more grading on that. You know, because something you want to be careful about, when we improve a road, one thing that will happen is traffic speeds will increase, okay? On Waterwell Road, it's, I can't see a whole lot of additional volume of traffic, but the one thing I can almost promise is that the speeds will increase.
Now, we are talking West Waterwell Road now.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was.
Right, so we need to make sure we've got the width there. It's a, the terrain's a little more hilly, so you can't see traffic coming. And so if you don't have the width through there, people tend to drive in the middle of the road or towards the middle of the road. And with the hillier terrain, you want to make sure they have plenty of room to stay, stay over on their side of the road. So there's going to have to be some grading on that project, and I'm talking minor grading, nothing real significant. And with, with, we'll probably add a little bit of base work on there because we're going, we need to elevate the road a little bit before we do a, a prime and double chip seal.
And just to, for historical purposes, this has been a priority for this commission, you know, to get this put to bed, I think. And we did meet with the city commission on this, and just so you can kind of understand what we talked about, they're not going to spend any money on the survey or anything like that, but they're willing to give us whatever we want. So in the past, it always has failed because we've had to purchased, you know, we wanted to realign the road and purchased ground from the homeowners out there, and it just never went any further. With conversations that we've had just with the commissioners, we've kept the lawyers out of it, they were willing to give us whatever it is standing as is now. And they just needed a survey, but I'm just saying, they're not going to, you know, they, don't expect their staff to sit there and write up that agreement. I mean, that's going to be something that we, we do.
Sure, sure. And the, as far as the legal survey's already been done.
Okay.
There is a.
Prior to you or did you do that?
No, no, we did that.
Okay, because our, my understanding also is we always had one, but that's not true.
That, eh, it could have been, but I don't know where it's at. So it was, you know, we, when we do the preliminary survey, you know, we shoot to section corners and corner corners.
Right.
We establish where the existing right of way is. I, I did some preliminary work and, you know, and established how much right of way, additional right of way that I would like to obtain for this project. And really, the line was already defined out there. I would like to have more, but, but the issue is the utilities that are out there and how much, you know, it would cost to have utilities moved is really not economically feasible. So what I would like to do is I would like to obtain right of way on the south side of the road to the power poles because we're not going to move the power poles. And so obtaining right of way that you can't use, we're not going to use is not practical. So we'd be obtaining, obtaining right of way to the power poles, and I'd like to get another 10 foot beyond that for a temporary construction easement. Those legal descriptions have been wrote and, you know, I've got an agreement that I've used in the past in my previous employment, you know, that I'm very comfortable with, but I can, you know, put that document together, very simple, have our county council look at it to see if he has any issues with it, and I think it's going to be a very simple process.
Well, I think though, and there's cost involved, but a lot less cost than obtaining right of way to the north.
Oh, sure.
From the property owners.
Sure, yeah.
The city, the city is going to be no cost. There'll be costs in relocating, I get the whole that it's not going to be free, but this seemed to be a really nice compromise here, and we were glad to kind of come up with this because I think, once that gets done, I think the project can move along pretty quickly.
Yes, yeah, we still have a couple utilities that have to be relocated.
Yep, I know.
You know, but those are, I believe that the two that I'm referring to are some copper lines and those are, everything's relative, relatively inexpensive compared to fiber optic and overhead power.
Justin, just to back up what Monty says, we're 25, this commission is 25 months into providing lip service to the, to the residents out there that we're going to get something done, and we haven't done it yet. But, I mean, we're trying our darndest, we really are, so we want you to, to be aware of the promises that we've made to that element of the county and, you know, we're pushing the panic button, so to speak.
Sure, sure.
To get moving, and Monty makes a great point, so. All right, well, thank you for your update. Are there any comments further?
Are you done?
No.
Sure. No, yes, that's, that's, I'm done.
You go in and then I've got a question. Go ahead.
Good, let's have at it.
Go ahead.
You have pavement patching, leveling, overlay and shouldering of Country Club Road just east of the city limits.
Uh-huh.
It's in black. And again, in previous conversations, I do remember, Mr. Chair, I think you were in that meeting when we talked and the city said, if you're ever thinking about doing something on that road, let us know. We'd love to partner with you because they've got some drainage things that they need to do. Do you remember that conversation?
We are, and we're, we're not talking the area that's totally in black here, only the area from, from East Borough, east to Holmes Road, not the, in the, the further your black, yeah, little bitty area there. It goes, you're, you're talking Holmes on past that to Simpson Road, which would be county, but the area Monty's referring to is from East Borough to Holmes Road and.
Just remind me of that conversation.
Yes.
Is that, is that right?
Yes. You're absolutely right. And I, and I mean, I saw it, but I, I didn't think I was going to bring it up here.
If you, if you can just reach out to them that, what you're thinking about, and that's what.
Right, right there. Now you're on it, right there. That, that portion from there to Holmes Road.
I brought this up just in case you, you had specific questions on this.
And that's the one, you're, you're right on it.
Yes.
It's a culvert right there where the black area is.
Right, there's, there's a box, yeah, there's a, there's a structure right here. And what, and I plan on talking to the city about this because it's the, it's not turned on. But the city right of way, I believe, starts about right here and is in the halfway into the road. So it's at the road center line until it gets down to the box right here, and then they own the city limits or on, on, the entire road's within the city limits, okay? So, yeah, I'll be talking with, with Dan Stack about this project to number one, to see if they have any projects, you know, going on. I was planning on talking to them. And then about just funding, you know, their, their portion of the road.
You might keep Darren in the loop there because Darren and I've discussed it, when you go a mile north of that, which, which is a deteriorating road right now on North Street, and that's going to increase water flow going down that way to that area just to the east of the green, yeah, even, even a little bit more than that. There is, that is a heck of a mess there right now because of the weather. And, and if we, when, once we improve water flow there, it's going to get worse if I'm, so, anyway, keep that in mind.
Sure, okay, okay, yes.
And in the big picture too, that's when we, we were having a kumbaya moment at that time. Everybody was getting along, but they. Rare, rare time, but they had just said, we need to sit down as staffs at least twice a year to kind of, you know, what are your commission's goals and what are our commission's goals? And maybe they have something planned for that three years down the road, but if we're doing it this year, can they move it up?
Sure, yeah. And this map, I, we put together, me and my staff put this together really this week as far as really looking at everything. Country Club Road is one of them that I, you know, the road's in, needs some work. It's, it's tired. You know, so I added that, and so I really haven't had a whole lot of time to, you know, to move forward with these projects. Right now, I'm just trying to identify the ones that we really need to do and work on. And so, yeah, there, there's a couple other things like the overlay on Ohio Street, okay? It's, is, that section of road's 44 feet wide. So you've got a 10-foot, or I'm sorry, a 12-foot lane with a 10-foot paved shoulder. You know, and there's discussions, you know, about, well, do we just pave the center 24 foot and not the shoulders? Well, the issue is you can't have a drop-off. You know, we do a two and a half inch overlay on that, and you can't have a drop-off right there at the, the edge of the pavement. So you're about, have to go all the way out to the edge of the asphalt 44 feet wide. And then there's issues where there's some pavement markings for bike trails out and through there. And I was going to talk with the city about having them, you know, put those pavement markings for the bike, bikes, you know, back on there. So there's some other stuff that I need to talk to the city about as well.
Just continue that conversation. Dan Stack's an outstanding person to work with and so.
And we're entering into some uncharted territory a little bit here in that we've made a concerted effort for the commissions to get along, the county commission, the city commission, and if we can throw into the loop our department. city commission, and if we can throw into the loop our department heads that, in conjunction with their department heads and give each other a heads up and work in that regard, which I'm, I'm confident that you're going to do that, it's, we're going to be way ahead in the long run, so thanks for those efforts. Roger, you had another question?
No, I'm good.
You're good now? All right. Further questions or?
I had a comment. Mr. Chairman, going back to North Street, like the chairman said, it's kind of a mess right now. Is the intent of the, the black and green section here to fix that problem or is that a different conversation?
Different issue. That, that's a whole completely different conversation. Yeah, right now, this is, I'm just trying to deal with pavement management, you know, trying to, just to, to provide, you know, maintenance on the, the surface that's out there and not really fix anything else right now.
All right. Thank you, Justin. That's well done and well thought out and getting in the swing of it.
Thank you.
This time I'll ask, is there any other business or announcements that need to come forth, additional business from the commissioners? Hearing that, I'll ask for a, an adjournment motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. We will meet in, in the following moments here in the study session room next door, so. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.